Good evening and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. I'm John McCartell, the mayor. I'm wearing my mask at the beginning to help continue to remind people how important it is to wear a mask when you're in public. Now, tonight, the only people in the room are about thirty feet over that way is our city manager and twenty-five feet that way is our city recorder. And so those are the only people in the room. And so we obviously have distance and it's hard for people to hear. So I will take off my mask, but I do encourage people to wear them whenever you're out in public. So council members, good evening. It's nice to see you. Let the record show that we have everybody here except councillor Martin Willis, and I know she's going to be joining us shortly. Council members, you have the minutes of the July fourteenth meeting in front of you. And do they meet with your approval?
I move to approve the minutes as received.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Good evening councillor Martin Willis. And you're just in time here for the minutes. All in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, there are no opposition. The motion carries going to visitor and public comment. We have somebody who'd like to speak just to Ahmed Ahmed. And come on in and share with us. Good evening. And welcome to city council. We're glad you're here. There you go. Okay, we're gonna just wait for a second. Jason, can you make sure that the that the public comment location is unmuted, please? Okay, I think Karen might be moving there to unmute that. We're getting there. Okay, I think that works. Good evening and welcome to city council.
Thank you. A pleasure to meet you, sir.
Thank you.
First time I see you. Okay, so will we start?
Yes, please. Uh huh.
And about few weeks ago.
Mayor, I have any problems hearing him?
I'm gonna have.
The mic or something?
Yeah, go ahead and step up closer so we can hear. Go ahead, because you were just telling us that you live on H Street.
He cannot hear me?
All right, is everybody can hear now? You're good now. Go ahead, please.
My face is gone. Okay. About approximately three weeks ago, right, we have a train that usually comes after midnight. Three weeks ago, start to be a disaster because he blows the horn forever. And it's very loud and it's so unnecessary. It sometimes comes like twelve ten, twelve fifteen, twelve thirty, one thirty, and every. And this is a senior area, like eighty-five percent lost this year, all seniors, all people with health issues, big health issues. They're all of them takes medication, sleep, and that train really wakes them up. A lot of them. I spoke with a lot of them and it's hard to get back sleep. It wakes me up myself, scares my cats, hide under the bed. It wasn't like this before. I mean, I've been here for over five years. And this has just started to happen recently. So one of the residents captured the video, captured a video of the train. When he started recording, it was whistling before, but we started recording, he captured twenty-seven blown coming all the way to from it's crossing. We didn't know that, but we found this out. Comes all the way across Independence until it's supposed to end by J Street and he's supposed to stop blowing the horn by J street crossing. Sometimes he blows after that. Anyway, so he was captured in video twenty-seven times. I sent a link. It's on YouTube. I sent it to her. I don't know if you. Do you watched it?
I haven't had a chance to see it, but.
What I'm talking about, sir, and it will come like it will accelerate because it coming from far. So you will hear like a little whistle, then it goes higher, higher, higher until it's extremely loud. Then after the whistle is over, he goes ten miles per hour. I don't know if he's doing this on purpose or not, but you will hear in the video as well. It's a lot of grinding sound by the wheels. Very disturbing, very loud. This is all facts and a lot of people complaining about it and on some videos as well. He can watch it. It's like eight minutes. Video is not very long. So anyway, we start talking about it and one of the residents made a formal complaint and was my job to get it signed from everybody. So everybody, actually, matter of fact, lots of them are really, really upset. Those old elderly people, number one, then if you pass each street, there's a lot of families, they have babies. Lots of my neighbors like cross from me. They have a baby. It wakes her up every night and baby scream, can't go back to bed again. So anyway, I filled up the front and the back and I was took him a long time because a lot of people are not home. A lot of people speak Spanish. I don't speak Spanish. So anyway, I figured this is enough to turn that the potential in. So I went to Department of Transportation Salem on. Well, the resident first took the video on July fifteenth, I believe. Then I got it signed on July seventeenth, then I turned it in on July twenty-first. I spoke with Priest Scott Mann, his crossing complaints specialist and had a conversation with him and he said he will start investigating. Okay, next day I got a phone call from Chris Mellon, he's operating practices specialist in commerce and compliance division in Salem. Okay, we had a long conversation, then he talked me about the figure of regulations and all that sent me an email with all the rules. And he told me if I want a quick response, I should contact Jesse. I can't, I can't read his last name. He's a transportation manager in Portland and Western. And those are the ones that operates in Independence. So I spoke with him. He's different than the first one. He's like all business. No feelings, no emotions, nothing. It's like, yeah, he's doing what he's supposed to do. That's the rules. Okay, from what he said is for every inner turn out there is eight crossings. Okay, so there is highway, rear grid crossings. You got Polk Street, you got Williams, you got B Street and C Street, Amama Street and D Street and E Street and G Street. He has, the train has to go through all those and not all of them has lights. I believe maybe two of them has lights. Okay, so by the rules, he has to blow the horn four times for each crossing. So four time eight, that's thirty-two. One small or one short and three long for each intersection. That's after midnight was so unnecessary. It's not even one person walking. I'm just saying, this is just, all this is not unnecessary. It wasn't a problem before. So I asked him, how come it's a problem now? Because I've been here for five years. I never had the issue. Then he said, couple of years ago in Washington, there is a train got out of tracks and it was a big accident. Then they changed the horn, the equipment inside the trains and probably just start to be practicing here. So they probably changed the horn to be louder. And that's what causing the problems. I said, okay, well, how come he just don't do short ones instead of long ones? He said he can't because there's no button that gives you like a short or halfway through ones. Which is not correct because he sometimes he does medium ones and after I had another conversation with the, with Chris Mellon and he told me he watched the video and that train that guy's drives, it hasn't been like upgraded yet. So at that point, we start to believe that guy is just having problems, but that's not the issue. That the guy has problems or not, that's not the issue. The issue is, he said he has no way to control it and he has to do it. And the whole way around it is to go to the city hall and submit a request to make Independence whistle free or whistle free quiet zone. And from that, they will contact the Department of Transportation Salem, then they will from there look who's gonna pay for it. Say pay for what? Say pay for all the equipments, gonna put up for every single crossing that and the lights and everything. And it's gonna take some time, it's gonna take some work, but they have changed their, they made so many ones, quiet zone areas in Salem and it's possible. And he said he's gonna talk to his. You call them engineers. I don't know why you call engineers, but to me as a driver, he's gonna talk to his man. In that day, he said he's gonna talk to, he went easy, then the next day he went crazy again. Then on Friday, I was miserable. He came at one thirty, woke everybody up, then came again on Monday. So yesterday I spoke with them again. I learned something through life experience. Don't challenge people, just try, talk gentle and nicely. What I did is like, look, man, I solved my problem. I bought a pair of cancellation, noise cancellation airheads and I don't hear nothing. Somebody shot a shotgun next to me. I'm not gonna hear it, but there's a lot of older people that are really suffering. And I knew it is for a fact because I was collecting signatures. I did not realize how many elderly people lived there until I've seen it. And remember that lady, she wanted to sign so bad, but her body was shaking. She was pushing a walker and she couldn't, like I forgive her, she couldn't, and she went back. Then also there are a lot of people with babies. So he's gonna get old at some point and karma is gonna get him if he's doing it purpose. And if he got parents, he should think of this older people. So yesterday it was kind of okay, I mean, but still you will still hear it. The main issue is, if this is how it's gonna be from now on, the winter is coming after like a couple of months, then sound travels harder and louder in the winter. It's gonna be a serious problem. It's already been a problem and people are very upset. I don't know if there is anything I can do to prove it more than, I mean, I got a paper assigned all the way.
We've heard your, your comment and what we're gonna do is I'm gonna turn this over to our staff member, because I did see your email and you did share that with folks. So I'm gonna turn that over to our city manager, Tom Pesamir. And they're going to follow up and see what some of the issues are and see what some of the things are. Do you want to make any, any preliminary comments?
No, I mean, I, I think the one thing you mentioned is a quiet, potential quiet zone. And you know, that's something that, you know, we could certainly look into. I do know that those can be very expensive depending on the situation. I think we have a complication along our streets where the railroad runs in the street because there really aren't crossings there. And so having a quiet zone, a train can sneak up on somebody who's just crossing the street there. But we certainly can look into it. We'll be happy to and talk to.
He said the train only comes once a day and it's gonna get this done with acid, just change the train time. Just making a date, I'm going to complain, he said, I believe, I don't remember, like almost from the command goal and it has to go down with loading and unloading. By the way, he turns around and come back between six and seven, it's loud as well, but he does not go as slow. But he said he have to go slowly, goes ten miles per hour. There is a lady, I just mirror right there. She says she lives by the three next two years as well. You can ask her. I mean, I never seen her, but you know, it is right there.
So we have your contact information and. Will city staff will follow up with this and they'll keep you informed. And let's go from there. Does that sound okay?
It's very okay. But why? You think it's gonna happen?
Yeah, it's really hard for me to say at this point. I mean, we will give it a serious consideration and talk and see what the, what the challenges are and what the opportunities are and.
Other question, are we supposed to pay for all that the city or the Department of Transportation?
Well, I mean, unless there's some sort of grant out there, they would be expecting the city to be.
And Mr. Mayor, can we get a report back on this as council after some investigation is done?
Sure. No problem. We'll do that. Thank you for taking the time and bringing this in. Thank you. A pleasant evening. Thank you. I don't think there's anybody else out there waiting for doing public comment. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move forward. I have a couple of things I wanted to visit about under my mayor report. As you know, Mayor Kuntz from Monmouth and I, with the assistance of Western Oregon University, we've had a mayor's community roundtable with a small group starting to try to identify issues. And we've had a couple of meetings. We're gonna have some more coming up and we're just trying to define issues and so far issues of everything from systemic nature and culture of bias in the community. These are what some of the folks have come up with. Housing insecurity and access, youth activities, inclusion and mentoring. Issues related to diversity in the workforce, leadership and business ownership, mental and behavioral health and supporting families with new education models. So there just started to be some preliminary conversations about how to approach these things, no decisions of any kind. And the group is going to be having discussions on whether there'll be some community wide forums. Well, there'll be small work groups. I just want you to know that the efforts are continuing and moving forward. And I really appreciate the support of Western Oregon University is providing a facilitator in a place for us to meet. And so we're, we're just working away on that. Second thing I want to provide information on this is you've heard from me before, Highway fifty-one and twenty-two, the safety issues were concern that we have. There are many, many others are. I met with Commissioner Mordhorst from Polk County and he's been in conversations with ODOT. There are some preliminary drawings that have been started to be done by ODOT and we're hoping that since there is federal money coming out for infrastructure around the United States, there's a $500 billion transportation infrastructure bill in Congress and there's lots of things moving in DC or being talked about moving. And so we're going to reach out to local governments and ask them to issue letters of support. I was hoping to be able to have something in front of you officially tonight. The county is still bringing some detail together. But I would ask that if council would give the city manager and I the okey dokey to send a letter that basically says there are safety issues and we are in support of doing something at Highway fifty-one and twenty-two. Move forward and do good stuff. That would allow us to move more quickly. And if council is okay with that, I, I seen shaking of heads. Is that everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. I appreciate your, your confidence and the manager and I will put something together. Because we'll be asking the other governments and fire districts. Because one of the things that's so important is that since we have so many volunteer fire units around here, when something bad happens, it's volunteers that get roused out of their bed or wherever they are to have to scrape people up and we need to make it so it's not happening. Okay, thank you. Let's continue moving forward. I think councillor Takis, you have both traffic safety and historic preservation. Do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Yeah, well, I'll start with the Historic Preservation Commission. That meeting was canceled, so really nothing to report there. So and not a lot to report from traffic safety. We've been, we began work on a parking code and trying to get some ideas about that, but COVID nineteen has kind of slowed that process. The other thing, there are several kind of reoccurring issues and hopefully we'll be hearing a little more with, with the the TSP presentation and that whole process. Some things that involve crosswalks and, and involve arterials and that sort of thing that will come out of that, but really nothing else to report from Traffic Safety Commission.
Thanks, your councillor Takis. Councillor Core, I think you have an Independence Day's commission report after, as I said last time, you folks did a great job. So councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've been able to get, unable to get a final report from Commissioner Thompson. I believe she was waiting though on one purchase order to come in from Public Works to kind of resolve the bottom line, but I did speak to Lisa Cox, the other principal organizer on the commission, and she believes, and Tom, correct me if, if this is incorrect, that this came in way under budget or way under expectation of what we were gonna spend. Also, she said that the feedback that she got, which was pretty much in line with what you talked about last meeting, Mayor, was that everybody had a good time despite the radical change in, in, you know, the setup. I did talk to quite a few parents who came to the park where I was and they were just happy to have something for their kids to do. So I think all in all, it was a success. Last time I thanked the police department, Public Works for their help, and I was remiss in not thanking the fire department. They are, of course, an integral part of this event, even though it was a much smaller part this time. I did want to take a moment to thank the fire department for their help.
Thank you councillor, appreciate that. Great. Okay, Mr. Pesamir, I think you have a report.
So yeah, so thank you, Mayor. Council. So I just, I have a number of things just kind of report out tonight. A lot of them are financial and a lot of them are actually grants that we have received. So I have kind of a list here and just kind of talk about those. The Oregon Community Foundation gave the museum $4,000. This was something that the museum applied for. It was strictly because of the COVID nineteen outbreak and their operations that were impacted. And so that $4,000 will go to museum purposes and we'll make sure we make good use of that money. We received a Ford Family Foundation grant for audio equipment. The amount was $9,000. The city of Independence is a fiscal agent for that. That's meant to be a shared resource amongst a number of different communities, specifically for the Latino outreach. So Ramon is kind of working on that and managing that. Part of the, the outreach efforts that seem to be fairly successful are podcasts. And so there seems to be a lot of opportunities there to produce both audio and video products that are short in nature, but are informative and can get the information out. So I know that Ramon used it already. I think he just got it a couple of days ago, but they created some videos in Spanish and English for our loan grant program. They put that out this afternoon, late this afternoon. So if you haven't seen it, go take a look. But the, the intent is to start doing a lot more content in, in short podcast type of videos where someone can share a link to something they can go and they can get information and and learn about it. And then if they want more information, they can follow up and go from there. But it's really targeted for the Latino community, communities, I should say, because it's not just limited to Independence, I think Woodburn and some other areas are gonna be using the, the equipment as well. So I'm excited to get that. We, the city, actually, the city didn't receive this, but we were part of the application for a USDA grant in the amount of $99,520 for the shared commercial kitchen. That is going to be going into Indy Commons. Indy Commons is basically creating a opportunity for a community kitchen where people can come in and rent the space and basically prepare meals or prepare other opportunities. It's meant to be kind of a business incubator and to get things moving forward. So excited that they're gonna be able to do that and get that kitchen up and running. I mentioned this last time, but I have more information since we, we met a couple of weeks ago. We basically were able to have some good presentations from the state on how to use the coronavirus relief fund monies. And so yesterday I signed the agreement with the state of Oregon to accept the remainder of those monies. We will be reimbursed for that as we spend them. The amount that is available to the city of Independence for this portion of it is $280,000. That money has to be spent before December thirty-first to 2020. And they are going to allow business reimbursement for this, this, this monies. So as we've been looking at it and really kind of going through it, we think the most appropriate thing to do is take the bulk of that money and to make sure that businesses get support. So we're gonna be doing that through technical assistance grants, some grant or grant loan programs, continuing to buy PPE for businesses so that they have access to that. We, I don't think it's up and running yet, but in Indy Commons is gonna be a station for people to go in and get liquid cleaning products and some other cleaning supplies. Here soon, we'll probably put another station in if that's successful in other areas, which we think it will because we've definitely heard there's a need for that. And then also for some tourism activities, they, the state said that we could spend a limited amount of money on some of the tourist things that have been canceled and moving forward. So we're gonna be looking to, to do some things for that. Some of the other monies, we're looking to partner with another local agency to do a utility support program to help individuals who are struggling to pay their water or sewer bills. That is something that we can do as well through these monies. It's not something that the city can actually distribute, but if we partner with another organization, we can, we could do that. So we're certainly looking to do that. And then we still have some ongoing city operations related to COVID. Right now, we're kind of penciled in less than a third of the monies for that. We'll see how that goes. If we need to move more to business or utility support or others, we will do that. So we will be coming back to council at some point in the future for supplemental budget. In order to expend those monies, we can obviously take those in, but we want to make sure that we have the spending authority to do that. So you will be seeing that sometime down the road, but I wanted to let you know kind of what we've come up with, at least from staff perspective of how we think it's best to get those monies put out. Our goal is to get it out sooner rather than later. So we're gonna get pretty aggressive on trying to get some of these programs up and running. We know that if the state's looking at cities who aren't spending it rate that would have the money expended by the end of the year, they don't want to lose out on the monies and there's some penalties for them. It's not expensive. So we certainly want to make sure that we're we're, we're meeting the, the goals there. We also found out late last week, and this is something that I think is, is really exciting. But Business Oregon released the rural broadband capacity program. The grant amount that was awarded to essentially Independence Monmouth, Western Oregon University and MyNet was $239,810. That was the exact amount that we asked for. And I can tell you that this grant was well oversubscribed. There was many more requests for the monies than they could afford, but we got a full award. And you know, I think that is, is really a testament to the ability for and the trust that they have that we're gonna be able to expend this money before the end of the year. It's very important that this money gets expended quickly. I think a lot of places would have had trouble trying to get it done, but with our partnership, especially with MyNet. MyNet has a proven record of being able to, to get those projects done. And so they, they gave us a full award. The monies that we proposed in the grant, I think is, is probably the most exciting part. So as we've been going through the COVID nineteen crisis, one of the things that we every school district has been struggling with is how do they get the distance learning and how do they especially get teaching into the homes of those who are somewhat disadvantaged. And so this money will connect all of the hundred and sixty-two students that the school district identified within the cities of Independence and Monmouth to broadband. So there are a number of places, especially apartment complex, complexes that do not have the opportunity to use MyNet. And this will actually provide a physical connection to MyNet through the fiber system. And so we should be able to have every student with inside of Central School District who's in, in the city limits have access to that. It'll also, we allocated some money at least through the timeframe for this, for the lifeline program to pay for the services that are offered. And we're working with the school district to find ways to continue that on after December thirty-first, when we can't utilize those monies for that as well. But that's a, I, I mean, I, I dare to say that I don't know if there are, are any other communities in the state of Oregon that are gonna be able to have all of their students hooked up for for broadband connectivity during this. So, so that's a, that's a huge win. The other portion of the grant was to actually create twenty fixed location hotspots around Independence, Monmouth and Western Oregon University. The goal there is, is we've learned this emergency is there are some times where people just need to be able to drive up, connect into wifi, have a great high broadband experience and be able to connect to the internet. We see people parking outside the library all the time. We see other opportunities. There are people that live outside the city limits of Independence and Monmouth who need distance learning as well. And this is a somewhat convenient way for them to allow them to come to a, a, a place and be able to get access. So we're, we're gonna have to figure out where those twenty fixed locations are gonna go. We'll probably try to put them in areas that have larger parking lots. We're hoping to have them located somewhere where. We're hoping to have them located somewhere where there's a generator in the near vicinity. So if we have any other sort of emergency type of event down the road, we will be able to provide a high-speed broadband to people who, who need it, need to communicate. So big kudos to our economic development team and MyNet for, for putting this out there. This was a partnership. A lot of this was generated from the meeting that the mayor talked about earlier with his partnerships. If we didn't know what the school district needed and we didn't know, you know, what the, what the gaps were, we wouldn't have known how to put something forward. And there's no way we would have been competitive for this grant. So all around, great news. And this is going to be somewhat of a game changer for a lot of people in this community and super excited about it.
I'm going to add a little bit here that
I just had a question as well. Sorry.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to add first is that because the school district, the cities, fire district, the university and others talk to each other, I didn't realize that other communities are not doing this around the state. But when I talked to other mayors, their communities are not connecting to each other within their community. They don't talk to their school districts. And this was Tom and his team and the others that he mentioned. This is about everybody working for the common good. And I just want to extend kudos to all the parties that were involved in this because this wasn't about anyone's silo. This was about what's good for the larger community. Because there's, there's benefits all the way around. And when the school district does better, the community does better. Though when the city is doing better, everybody else is. So I just really want to really emphasize what the manager said. And I didn't realize this was unique. But I guess that's Independence and Monmouth and our larger community. So anyway, Council Ransom Smith, you had a question, please.
I just wanted to, more of a statement maybe for the city manager. I know we don't know exactly know what Central's going to do today. Given Salem Kaiser's announcement, can we work on getting these hotspots into similar locations where we're going to be doing free lunch as well? Like we have a free lunch program and I would hate to see it like where they come to get free lunch but can't get on the wifi and do work if that's something that continues through the fall as we look at November.
Yeah, that will definitely be a, a part of the conversation. Schools are an obvious, easy place to, to put these. They have, most of them have a generator. Most of them have. They do have some limited wifi, but we're hoping, these are going to be some, you know, on some taller poles are going to be high-powered. They will be able to handle many, many users at the tanks at one time with, with good high speed. They'll be engineered and designed well. So I think it's a great opportunity and absolutely, absolutely, schools will be considered. And those locations will probably get primary consideration as well. School district is going to be a part of, of this decision-making process along with Western Oregon, Monmouth. We're going to put together a whole group. We need to do it quickly because we have to, there's a lot of work to do to get this done and we want to get it online as soon as possible. But everybody will be a part of this conversation. So. Yes, Jessica.
Can we go back to the utility support program that you mentioned? It's timely that you bring that up because at the last meeting, you mentioned that it was probably time to move away from the disconnections and start getting people back onto paying their bills and possibly set up payment plans if needed. I don't think we're there yet. I think there's a lot of people struggling in our city, particularly families with kids. I know Council Ransom Smith brought this up during the budget cycle about maybe we need to start looking at our budget and see what we can cut or put off to another time. Question I have for you is, do you have any sense now of how many people are struggling? How many people are in arrears with their water bills? And can this utility support program help in any meaningful way for those folks?
Yeah, we think so. I mean, we, that was one thing that we looked at. You know, we haven't figured out how much monies can get allocated to that. But that's something that we, we've been taking a look at. We have already announced and we do plan on doing utility disconnect, disconnects in August to get caught up. But as I mentioned before, we're going to be working on payment plans and we'll be certainly factoring all of this into it. But that's, you know, something that we're going to have to, to get caught up on. And we're, we're going to be as workable as we possibly can with everybody. And I think that's actually going to give us a lot more information about where the real need is and how we can craft this program with partners. We're already reached out to partners to figure out how we can do this. So it's our goal to try to get that up in, in, into place fairly quickly.
Well, just, just because we've announced we're going to do it in August doesn't mean we have to do it in August. And I, I hope there's going to be some sensitivity around, you know, if we find out people are really hard pressed and, you know, people have lost their jobs, people have lost their insurance, people are struggling to keep, you know, to educate their children. So it's a lot of hurt out there. And if we have a means to help, we need to help. I mean, you guys have done an amazing job with businesses in our community. I think we need to pay the same amount of time and attention to residents.
Well, I will certainly take that into consideration. So.
And also like to see some sort of an outreach education program around it too. Only because I recently sat in a meeting at work with the three major utilities. And their biggest issue that they're having right now is that the people that need help right now are folks that have never had to ask for help and are having a hard time navigating the system. And it's, and I don't, when I say that, I want to see it as like a holistic approach. If you need help paying your water, chances are you need help paying your electric, chances are you need tannish, that kind of thing. So if we could do like some sort of a holistic outreach program about everything that's out there, we don't want to just see you pay us. We want to see you pay everyone to get you whole again, because there are so many programs, but people don't know where to ask for help.
Yeah, well, I think that's, that's, that's a great idea.
And let's, let's not forget the, the whole situation with the employment department messing up unemployment benefits. So I mean, there are people out there who've been trying to do the right thing and get on top of stuff and they just, you know, for no, no issue on their own. And we need to do something to help them because if we don't help them pay their water bill, they can't respect the main street.
Right, yeah. But you know, on the, on the flip side of that, if, if they get too far behind, they'll never catch up either. So. So we've got to, we've got to come up with a balanced approach. And I, I hear that's what you're saying is we need to figure out how to be compassionate and fair and to, and to make this work the best that we can.
We still have folks in town that haven't gotten a check since March.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Pesmer?
Yeah, just a couple of other real quick announcements. There is going to be a opportunity for art collaboration or for art collaborative grant opportunities. There will be some money in Polk County, so we'll definitely be looking into that. The pool will be reopening soon with a modified schedule. You know, just for lap swimming and some small classes that, that will be happening soon if it hasn't already opened. I'm not certain on that. Drive-in movies still have been hugely successful. We'll continue those through August. And just two last things, I will be out of the office August 10th through the 19th. And so I'll let you send you an email about that. And then, Mary, you asked me to remind you about a letter to the feds on refinancing of tax exempt bonds.
We have, I put out a, a letter a number of years ago, they changed the rules on tax exempt bonds. As you recall from our last meeting, when we were able to refinance the bonds, we saved a boatload of money. There are some bonds right now that are not able to be refinanced because of some of the federal finance rules. With the help of the Gloria Butch, our finance director, I was able to issue a letter because there's federal legislation that is pending that would allow municipalities and governments to be able to refinance some of those bonds if the legislation passes that would save lots of money to cities like us and to others. And so I just wanted to let you know that we are working and this is not just us, it's the whole association of government finance officers and other governments around the state. And so we're putting some efforts forward on that. We sent a, a letter to our congressional folks and I've already spoken to Senator Wyden's office, drawing their attention to. And we, since we have such a clear example of what the good things that can happen when you can refinance, we all know when, whenever we've refinanced our home, it's always been better. And so the same kind of thing, we're using that. So I just wanted to pass it on. Mr. Pesmer, did you want to add anything to that?
No, Mayor, I think you covered it well. I, I think it's a great opportunity and, and hopefully that makes it play through. And so that's all I had. So, but if you, council has any questions for me or my staff.
If not, we're going to keep moving. I think we have a TSP consultant presentation. Fred, I think you're out there. There he is. I see his name coming up.
Hi there, Mayor. Hi there, everybody. Hope you're doing well. Yep, we have a TSP presentation. I didn't know if I was going to get dropped in here to introduce it. We are working with Kittleson and Associates to prepare the TSP. We have, we're going through essentially, I think it's like a four-phase process to get this done. We have sort of gone through the first phase where we've looked at existing conditions. We're studying stuff. We're looking at existing transportation conditions, but not only just roads. You know, we're looking at things like pedestrianism. We're looking at things like non-motorized travel, like bikes. We're looking at things like the transit system and we are lucky to have Kittleson working with us on it. So I'm hoping that Matt Bell is on the line to take it from here. Hopefully he is. And he will guide you through the presentation.
While we see your name come up, Matt. You're still muted. I'm just providing commentary.
Thank you. Just looking for the mute key there.
Good evening. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you need me to push? Nope, nope. Looks like their presentation might, there it is. All right. So thanks, everybody, for the chance to give you a quick update on where we are with the transportation system plan update. As a, as Fred just mentioned, we have been working on this project for a little while. So I want to just kind of give you a quick overview of the project, kind of what we're doing, where we are and where we're going. So if you want to jump to the next slide. So first off, for those of you who may not be familiar with what a transportation system plan is, I just have a couple of slides on this. And this is, so first off, it is, it is a long-range plan that addresses multiple transportation modes. So it's, it is a multimodal plan. Walking, biking, transit, motor vehicle represent a fairly large part of most transportation system plans. But in communities like Independence where, where we have a rail line that travels through the community has some challenges with, with, within the community, it becomes a bigger part of the plan as, as, as does the air, the water and the pipelines in similar situations. So the, the TSPs also will identify goals and performance measures to, to track and to monitor those goals. It'll evaluate the needs, identify likely financing for, for addressing those needs. And then it will identify and prioritize solutions consistent with other adopted plans. So such as the, the recently adopted airport master plan. And then some of the other state, regional, local plans that help, help provide a backdrop for what we're doing as part of this plan. Next slide. Also, why we do TSP updates, first, there is, there is a legal requirement by one of the Oregon administrative rules, which is the transportation planning rule. So it indicates that communities like Independence need to provide a transportation system plan that accommodates all the potential growth within the, within the urban growth boundary over, over the planning horizon. It's also required as part of periodic review through the Department of Land Conservation Development. So the practical, more practical reasons is that it provides a basis for your capital improvement plan. So this is your, your, your rolling plan for making capital improvements in transportation throughout the city. It helps establish the system development charges, how much you're going to charge for, for new residential units, new commercial development that goes in the community. Land development conditions of approval. So whenever somebody does come in with a development application, what those conditions might be. Identifying future investments and land use decisions. So preserving, preserving the right of way for any, any potential needed improvements and helping to make decisions about where land could potentially be developed or redeveloped. And finally, ensuring the planned transportation system meets long-term needs. So a large part of what we do is projecting out into the future and making sure that as, as traffic volumes grow within the community, that the transportation system can support that growth. And really protect right of way as, as I mentioned. And then we ensure that policies are consistent and coordinated across state, regional, and local plans. So there's, there's a whole lot of, a whole lot of plans that, that, that sort of serves again as a backdrop to this plan. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, it provides a direct link to the statewide transportation improvement program where, which is, which is Oregon Department of Transportation's version of a capital improvement program. And some of the larger projects on both state and local facilities make their way into this and ultimately get funded over, over about a four-year period. Next slide. So just a quick overview on the project team. So there is, we're, we're working pretty closely with City of Independence. Fred is, Fred has been a pretty active, playing a pretty active role as part of this project. We also have a partner at Oregon Department of Transportation's, his name is Michael Duncan. He's the agency project manager on the project. He both represents ODOT on the project and helps bring ODOT's perspective as well as, as well as manages the contract from ODOT's side. I'm with Kittleson and Associates. We're a traffic engineering and transportation planning firm. We're based in Portland. We do a lot of this type of work for communities similar to Independence. And then Angelo Planning Group, who are land use and policy experts. And they've had quite a bit of experience with you guys. Both, and I think Angelo Planning led a team of folks to work on your southwest, southwest concept plan area. We actually provided the traffic assessment for that area. So combined, we've collectively, we both have quite a bit of experience working within Independence and Monmouth. So we also have advisory committees. We work with Citizens Advisory Committee made up of predominantly citizens from within the community. A very vocal group. Then we have a technical advisory committee, which is, this is mostly, mostly agency staff and some others that, that help keep us on track from a technical standpoint, make sure that we're consistent with all these other plans and policies. We, we will, we have a few places where we'll be touching base with both the planning commission and city council. Not just in this type of informal setting, but more informal settings as we get further on in the process where we, we will come together on some joint work sessions and, and in some, and obviously the hearing process. And then finally, we are, we're connecting with the general public. So one of the, one of the big parts of this project is a, there is a large public involvement component to the project. And, you know, through, although given the current situation, we've had to shift some of our activities to more of an online basis. We have held one online open house. We had a pretty good turnout, which we had several, I want to say more, more than 100 comments. A variety of different topics related to both existing inventory information as well as existing conditions of the community. Which is actually pretty good for this type of work. Next slide. So a little more on our advisory committees. So these guys, we ask them to attend meetings, review and draft, review, draft memos and provide comments in those memos. And then encourage citizen involvement at open houses and participate if they're available. So there's a, there's a good number of people that participate on both of these communities. And they really make the plan a lot better. We, we can do, we can do so much to look at things from a, like that does. Is the system meeting up with standards? Is it meeting with, is it meeting performance measures? But, and we can identify solutions to address those things involving the technical advisory committee, the citizens advisory committee and engaging with the public really means that we get more out of the planning process and provide a plan that's more tailored to the community. Next slide. From a, here's, this is our general project schedule. We kicked off the project in early part of this year. We've, we've gone through, we've developed our public involvement communications plan. We have reviewed all the background policies and plans and policies that again serve as a backdrop to this. We've gone through our inventory and existing conditions and I'll talk a little bit about their, that here in a minute. And then our future condition, we're moving quickly into our future conditions and alternatives analysis. And then our future condition, and we're moving quickly into our future conditions and alternatives analysis, and I'll talk about that as well. We are planning on wrapping up things in April, February, April of, of next year. So things are moving pretty quickly. Next slide. This is just a list of the technical memos. So I don't know that if I have, I don't know that I have a plug on this, this presentation. But we, we do have a project website that we're using to, to make sure that everybody has access to all these materials. The website is independencetsp.com. And on that website, you can find all of our, all of our meeting materials, like agendas and meeting minutes. And then of course, all the technical memos and final memos, both in draft and final format that we're developing along the process. We have at this point taken care of a technical those one through three A and three B. We're currently in the process of technical those four and five. We will be moving into six here in the next few weeks. Next slide. So quite a few meetings as part of this, the technical advisory committee and citizens advisory committee, we typically meet in pairs. And so we're going to meet three times or, or pardon me, four times throughout, throughout the planning process. Each time corresponds with some of the more major deliverables. We also, again, you can see there, we're going to meet with the joint planning commission and city council as part of work sessions two times before we come together. As part of the hearing. Next slide. So just maybe before I jump into where, where we're at, any, any questions about the overall process?
I have a question, Matt. How was the citizens advisory committee membership solicited?
It's a great question. I'm, I'm tempted to turn it back over to Fred if it's.
Yeah, that's fine.
To get Fred to jump in there.
Um, so basically, we, I talked to folks, we reached out to folks. Anybody specifically that we thought might have an interest in certain things. So, you know, I sent a email to folks in the air park if they had a desire, some of the, the. Homeowners Association chairs up there and whatnot, curious if anybody had an interest there. And then we also asked around here quite a bit, then just to folks that we knew in the community. So we knew, for example, that Rich Clark, the gentleman who appealed, appealed the, the Brandy Meadows. Decision had an interest in health and walking. And so because of that, we reached out specifically to him and said, hey, do you know of anyone else? With an interest in, in things like this. So it is a fairly well-rounded group of citizens. Also, sort of the, the technical group is fairly well-rounded, I would consider too, so.
Why, why was it, why was there not a public solicitation for that?
Right. Why did we reach out to only people we knew?
Yeah.
Um, that's a, I mean, that's a good question. If you know of people or if basically two. We thought, now that's a good, that's a good point.
I'm going to make the suggestion that you create a Facebook event and for the next citizens advisory committee meeting. And let people chime in if they have an interest.
Agreed.
Second question I have. This is a sensitivity on my part. When we refer to something as a citizens advisory committee, I feel like we leave part of our community out. I think we should be calling this a residence advisory committee. Everybody who lives in this town, regardless of where they fall on the, on the citizenship spectrum is important. And we should be taking their, their interest at heart.
Okay.
Okay, Matt, let's continue.
Yeah, thank you. Great, great questions. So again, we're, we're, we're working our way through this process by developing tech memos. Largely guide both the planning process as well as when we get into the draft T S P itself, how that, how that is formatted. So the, one of the first tech memos was a plan, the policy memo, it's available on the website and I encourage you to take a look at it if you're interested. But the one, one of the first ones that we really engaged with our advisory committees on was, was the tech memo two. Which is goals and objectives and evaluation criteria memo. Jump to the next slide. So these, these are the, these are the six goals that we developed to help, to help both guide the process of developing the T S P. As well as to shape sort of policies as, as we, as we go forward. And each of these goals was, was evaluated with, along with the, sorry, with the advisory committee. Each of these goals also has a number of objectives that were evaluated with the advisory committee. And those objectives, along with the goals, get filtered down into a series of evaluation criteria that we use. To, to ultimately prioritize projects, to, to hopefully prioritize those projects that help meet the most, most of these goals. Just real, real briefly, there's some, some of these are, might be a little bit more straightforward. But the consistency with community vision, this is really just intended, of course, to be, to make sure that we're being mindful that the community does. Have, as, as a vision and that we want to make sure that we're consistent with that as we go forward. Smooth and safe traffic flow is just like it sounds. We want to make sure that, that we're, that we do have. That we are balancing the needs of, of the various travel modes, ensuring that we are meeting our capacity needs. As well as making sure that we're meeting our safety needs for, for traffic. Increasing walking, biking, scooter and other non-motorized trips. This is just like the increased transit ridership, where we're just looking to make the community more multimodal. There will be, and as we, as we kind of work our way through the process, an emphasis on bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. As well as opportunities to access a variety of different areas by different modes. Future focus really kind of speaks to making sure that, that we're being mindful of, of new technologies and new transportation. Opportunities that, that are coming down the line. Transportation is a pretty dynamic field. And there's a lot of, a lot of exciting things that are, that are coming up and not necessarily just e-scooters and things like that. But, but lots of other interesting things that we want to make sure that we're staying mindful of. Finally, is making sure that we're financially, that we're presenting a plan that's financially. That's should probably say stable. That is our financial stability. Thank you. And that, that, that we, that we are creating a plan that can be funded through existing funding sources. Or that is identifying potential funding sources to, to, to contribute to those, to those costs. Next slide. So tech memo three A covers the existing conditions inventory. So this is, you can just jump into the next slide here. The inventory is fairly comprehensive. This is, this is the general areas that we cover within each of these areas. There's, there's quite a bit of information, like for example, within the roadway system beyond just doing inventory of the streets. We look at things like jurisdiction, functional classification, street, street standards. Access facing standards and a variety of other things that, that, that kind of shape the street system. For public transportation system, you know, we've been coordinating quite a bit with the chariots group and getting, getting lots of information on both their existing facilities. As well as what their plans are for the future. Similar with the rail, I'm sorry, similar with air bike, bicycle and pedestrian. Again, it's, it's, it's really emphasized on what types of facilities are out there today, where the gaps, where the deficiencies. Where can we potentially be improving those? Jumping in the air and rail, you're again, working with the airport, working with the rail line, making sure that we understand what types of facilities are there. Where the needs are there. And then similar with water pipeline and others. Land use and population, just real quick on land use and population, this is a, a big part of this process. Because within Independence, there we, within a lot of transportation system planning efforts, we work with travel demand model. In this case, that a model isn't, isn't available for Independence. So we, we do things. A little, with, with actually a little bit more, a little more care and detail. So we do go through and estimate, we protect future population, we protect future growth, growth and employment. We, we identify areas where those, where those new housing, where new jobs could potentially go. And we use that to really shape where our, where our future conditions are, or our future traffic operations look like. And so whenever we get back together again, next time, we'll probably share a little bit more on what those future conditions are like. Next slide. You just jump right into the next slide. So tech memo three is our existing conditions analysis. This is where we, we conduct traffic counts. And I believe we have eighteen intersections throughout the community. Plus or minus two intersections that are really closely spaced, ultimately impacting one another. Then there, we do a traffic operations analysis at each of these intersections and identify what, what potential capacity constraints there are. What sort of queuing issues there are. We do what's called the non-automobile transportation analysis. Or sometimes we refer to it as more of a multimodal traffic analysis. But we look at things like, we look at the bicycle, pedestrian and transit networks. And we look at how all those networks are serving the community. Again, where are the gaps, deficiencies and where the needs are for each of those modes. And we start using that as a basis for identifying where, where potential improvements could be. Next, we look at, we do a crash analysis and the crash analysis for Independence is done both. Kind of, we, we look at things, we look at our intersections and we spend a fair amount of time on our, on our, our eighteen core study intersections. But we also look at crash data more comprehensively throughout the community. We look at various trends and patterns and areas. Where, where there is a high concentration of crashes, whether they're, these are severe crashes or a particular type of crashes. And we use that as a basis to develop countermeasures to, to address those crashes. And next we, we look at access management. So access management is, is just a, the process. By which we might be controlling the number of access points along, along given roadway. Particularly some of the higher classification roadways where we want to make sure that we can minimize access to increase traffic flow. Lastly, we, we, we spend a fair amount of time looking at environmental justice issues within the community. Identifying where the, where the title six communities are, where, where any sort of transportation disadvantaged communities might be. And we, we, as we, as we get further along with the process, we use that information to make sure that we're not creating any disproportionate impacts. In those communities as well as make sure that some of the projects that we're prioritizing are making sure that we're providing connections. To those communities and that, that those connections are, are taken, taken into consideration, the larger, larger network. And next slide. So just, just a real quick, high-level summary of what we're seeing between our, with, with our inventory and our existing conditions analysis. Is that, it looks like I'm missing one of the slides, but is, from an inventory standpoint, we are certainly seeing some, some gaps and deficiencies. And just the basic network of, of roadways as well as gaps and deficiencies in the bike-competitive transit. Networks and areas where we can identify improvements. From an operational standpoint, we are seeing, we did identify a handful of intersections that have some operational deficiencies. And some similar level intersections that have what we would call higher than, higher than normal crash rates. So I, I forgot to mention that, that as part of our crash analysis, we develop crash rates as a basis to compare between both locals. Well statewide data to really just kind of help prioritize and organize the way we evaluate these, these intersections. We do a similar thing for roadways and there are both intersections and roadway segments within Independence that have higher levels of. Higher crash rates than what we see on, on a statewide level. So those are certainly areas that we'll be focusing on as we move forward. Next, as part of our, again, as part of our bike and pad facility analysis, we, we do, we do spend a fair amount of time considering how people might be feeling. As they're traveling along some of the streets. And so one of those measures is level of traffic stress. And what we found through that process is that there are, of course, some streets where there are high levels of traffic stress for bikes and pedestrians. And finally, as part of our access management analysis, we did identify a, a number of streets where there are, where there are a high number of. Whether they're intersections like public, public street connections or private driveway connections. And those, those things, you know, driveways, and we're not, we're not actually going to be identifying. As part of this project, we don't typically identify areas to consolidate or to close or to impact access. It's just more of a way of, of flagging the need for potential access management as, as, as we go along. And so of course, what we see is that, that there are a lot of roadways where we're not necessarily meeting those access spacing standards. So I think, yeah, I think that's the last slide there. And just, just before I jump into questions here, I'll just tell you. So as far as our next steps, as we, we do, we are projecting. Future traffic, future traffic volumes and. Evaluating how those volumes are impacting traffic operations, impacts on bike and pen transit and things like that. We are currently in the process of finalizing that future traffic conditions memo and delivering it to the city this week. In, in advance of our next round of advisory committee meetings. We're also in the process of finalizing our alternatives analysis. So again, this is the memo that will really identify the different opportunities there are to address these gaps, deficiencies and needs in the system. As well as all, as well as all the things that we can come up with as part of a, part of a. Part of the initial look. We do again, really rely heavily on the advisory committees and the virtual open houses. To help tailor, tailor those alternatives, prioritize those alternatives and create a plan that's reflective of the community's vision and needs. So with that, I'll take a break here and see if you guys have any questions.
Questions for the presenter?
So Matt, this is Tom Bestmeyer, City Manager. So Matt, I mean, obviously we have some unique challenges here in the public comment and. Process, you know, I, I think we're really fortunate to have some amazing online tools. That we have access to that online open house and the ability to go in and make comments directly on things is, is, is a tool. That I, I know was developed for some much bigger clients and we're fortunate to be able to, to utilize that. But I, I also think that we as a community to recognize that we have a lot of people who don't. Use online resources as readily as others. And so I think it's going to be really incumbent on us as we go through this process to make sure that we figure out creative ways. To get that public input. And so, you know, I want to make sure the council knows that we're all aware of it. That online open house was, was good, but it by no means captured all of the voices in our community. And so we're going to have to figure out some creative ways in order to, to do that, depending on how long we are limited on, on what we can do. But do you have any, any thoughts that you have that, of ways that we can get those voices involved?
Yeah, I am, again, I, I felt like, I felt like our first round, we were. We, you know, we made that, we made that switch. We, we originally had intended to do both an in-person and an online open house. And the online open house is really just intended to supplement the in-person open house. And so making that shift to online, there was, there was a lot more emphasis there. But, but it's, yeah, but certainly there's, there is ways that we can, we can probably broaden our, broaden our scope a little bit. One of the, one of the heckups in that process was, was getting everything translated into Spanish. And so one, one thing that we've promised Fred is that we're, we're going to make sure that we have the, the online open house. Ready to go in Spanish and English from, from day one. Last time, there was, there was a few days of, of delay before the Spanish one was up and running along with the, along with the Asian, English one. And then as well as just making sure that all the, all the advertising materials, the promotional materials are also. And they were as part of this round as well, translated in English and Spanish and distributed broadly. I know Fred, I'm not going to do any justice here, but Fred did, did quite a bit of late work to get, to get the word out. And distributing flyers and posters and making sure that, that, that there were as, as many people had access to that as possible. And I, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I think that we, I think that one thing that we had talked about, and I'm not sure if we actually were able to go forward with this. Was creating a, a space in the entryway to city hall for people to potentially come in and utilize the online open house. I'm looking, waiting for you to nod your head, Fred, to see if.
We, we did not get, we did not have that done for, for this one. But that's some, something that we would definitely like to do next time is to have. Uh, some sort of. A computer or whatever that somebody could hop on and, and, and interact with the material. Yeah, that's something that we definitely like to do. We also have talked about the idea of things like posters and stuff. That, that are, that you can interact with. So we're definitely aware that this is very strange times that we're living in to try and do public engagement in. So, uh, so yeah, it's something that we've, we've thought a lot about. We're, we're trying to do our, the best that we, that we possibly can.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm remembering back to when. Ramon and I were in Park and I realized it was pre-social distancing. But we had great success at just being approachable to people who are out and about and, and. And be able to just ask them some questions and get, get answers verbally rather than having to interact with something electronic. And that might be an option to consider, even if it's just a weekend. And somebody down the road has tacos for sale or has popcorn for sale or something that would make. Make the event a little more inviting.
I agree.
And certainly we are, we are scoped to do things in person as well as online. And so given the opportunity to come to the community, even if it's something as simple as, as like a pop-up. Don't know what I'm trying to say, but like a, a pop-up presentation, maybe like a market or a fair or anything where there might be people. I know that even here in, in, I live in Milwaukee, Oregon, and here our farmer's market is still going. So it might be the kind of thing where we could. Come into the community and, and do something, even if it's a little bit more smaller scale. It doesn't pull a bunch of people in, but gets people as they pass by. So.
I think what you're hearing is, uh, we've done really well with our twenty forty plan and previous plans. By being very aggressive and trying to get people engaged. Because when they can engage upfront, that makes the, the planning process stronger, which makes the outcomes a lot easier to get to. And I'm sure that, as Mr. Pesamir pointed out, uh, there, there are some ideas. And I'm sure that we could throw additional kinds of things, whether it's pop-ups, you know, we actually have two Saturday markets. That operate simultaneously. And then we have some people who just, they don't want to get online. They're not strong in those kind of areas. So we have. We have a variety of different places. We also do put out a city newsletter that goes out every month. And so there, there's some, we're already mailing to many households. That doesn't include everybody apartments. But that's one of the tools that might be in there. And, uh, you know. I don't think there's too much input, you know, because after a while. It lets me, I, I think that there's some real strength in taking the time because we are at a very salient, a major shift in our. Our community's at a new, a new point where we haven't been before. We have new riverfront properties coming on. We have a hotel. We have new. Housing that's going into the south part of town. We know we have issues trying to cross a rail line in the south part of town. We also know we need to go west. Also, and so there are a variety of different issues that I know people need to, uh, talk about. And I think it would make people feel good to have the opportunity to provide, provide input. So that, that's my input for, for what.
Mayor, if it's, if it's all right, I'll just jump in. We definitely did put in something in the newsletter that did go out. Also, the last couple of them, we've just noted that this project has been going on, or maybe it's not the last couple, but definitely a couple of the newsletters. We've noted that this project is going on with a link to the website. Also, uh, we specifically did go to apartments and dropped off the newsletter for the project. And some of the apartments were very. Happy to take that and to, to give it to their tenants. So that was, I mean, that was, uh, uh, I mean, we, we have tried to take that step as well.
Thank you. And that, that wasn't a, a shot saying you hadn't. I didn't, I didn't mean to imply anything like that, but. Happy to visit offline and, and throw any other ideas around. And I'm sure there are others that would be. Happy to, to share things and it's not just all trying to move forward. So I, I guess the bottom line is, we have our eye on this. The reality is if we bring you a transportation system plan that hasn't had proper public vetting and public engagement. Would be doing a disservice to this community. So one way or another, we'll figure out how to make sure that we get that in, input. And, and from my perspective, and I might have to arm wrestle with O dot on that, even if that means delaying this process somewhat. And until we can get to the point where we can, we can make sure that that input is there because it's, it's critical. These are very important plans. It's going to be around for a long time. And if we miss the mark, it, it will, it will be a problem for us for a long time. Thank you, Mr. Pesamir. Really appreciate that. Anybody else have anything else they need to say at this point? Okay. I think, are we, have we completed what we needed to? I'm asking Fred.
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate you taking the time, looking for, seeing you around the community.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to continue moving forward here. We have an R F P selection for system integration programming services. Uh, Mr. Cottom, I think this is to you. You're still on mute. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I'm here to discuss. Staff is requesting from council to approve a proposal from the automation group or tag. For system integration and programming services and awarded initial contract for services. Currently, the public works department has control communications and data collection from nineteen facility sites around the city. Each site has controls, multiple functions and can have multiple buildings also. The larger sites can have a hundred functions to control, monitor and data log, supervisory control and data acquisition or SCADA. Are how we manage thousands of signals twenty-four seven to efficiently operate water and sewer systems citywide. Each site has a program logic controller or PLC to communicate with the master site and PLC at the public works office. We then have programs and applications to interface and monitor and control the system citywide in real time. All this takes numerous computer programs and hardware to make this happen. System integrators are the people who tie all these systems and subsystems together. I'll pause there. Does anybody have any questions so far?
Please continue.
So the city advertiser requests for proposal for R F P for system integration and programming services. After reviewing the proposals and interviewing the top responders, the committee selected tag as the city's integrator for the recycled water use facility. The current project for these services is the recycled water use facility and the William Street Pump Station. Tag is currently a subcontractor on this project and has given a quote for services for this project for the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars and. Forty-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars. This is a wastewater project funded by the state revolving loan fund and approved by council. The loan is configured in the current rate structure. The project is included in the current budget and the current capital improvement program or C I P. Staff recommends that council approves this proposal and attachments are tags, initial proposal. And response to the R F P tags quote for services and the resolution for the funding for this project.
Are there questions for the presenter? I don't hear any questions, uh, since this was already in our, in, in the budget and the capital improvement program. We've seen this, uh, this concept before and this is to award this. This is an action item. And if someone would suggest action, that would be great. Counsel X.
I moved to award the contract to the automation group tag for integrator services in the amount of forty-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars. And to authorize the city manager or designate to sign the contract.
Second by Counselor Morton. Is there further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. I hear no opposition. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Evander, you have the next item, please. You're still on mute. There you go.
All right. Hey, everybody. Uh, so what this is about is this is a small little code change. Essentially, the deal is that when we adopted the historic preservation chapters of chapter fifty-nine of the independence development code. What we didn't do was delete chapter sixteen of the. The independence municipal code. And so there are two separate codes. They were exactly almost the same. You could tell that two separate attorneys had gotten their hands on them at different times. So there was like just slight changes in the, in the sections. One said, for instance. You know, had certain headings. One referred to independence as independence. One referred to it as the city. There, they were essentially exactly the same. But in adopting subchapter fifty-nine, we feel like it's important now to. To delete that conflicting subchapter or chapter sixteen in the independence municipal code. And so that's what this would do. Also in doing that, we looked at the duties in chapter two. Our section two of, uh, whereas detailing the duties of the historic preservation commission. We felt like it was warranted just to sort of simplify those duties to reflect the, the most recent code update. That in essence is what this is all about. Are there any questions?
Well, good. We have a housekeeping. Ordinance which does all these things. If there are no questions. There is a series of motions that we need to go through.
I will be happy to start. I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill twenty twenty dash zero eight in full. As the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
A motion.
Second.
Second by ransom Smith. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. I hear no opposition. Motion carries.
And ordinance repealing independence municipal code, chapter sixteen historic preservation, amending chapter two administration. And declaring an effective date.
Second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill twenty twenty dash zero eight for the second time by title only.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Second by Hicks. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? No opposition. Motion carries.
And ordinance repealing independence municipal code, chapter sixteen historic preservation, amending chapter two administration. And declaring an effective date.
Third motion, please.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance council bill twenty twenty dash zero eight.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second by ransom Smith. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Hear no opposition. All, uh, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number one five eight two.
Council announcements. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Try to stay cool. And as I said, everybody who's still watching, wear your mask when you're out and about. Thanks so much. Would somebody move us to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're done. Thank you very.